All right, I'm gonna call this meeting the June 7th Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. And we'll get started here. Why don't we start with the pledge of allegiance? Former trustee Bieber, why don't you lead us in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unafidion, under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
And just so everyone is aware, this meeting is being broadcast on our YouTube channel. So it is a live broadcast and then we have it recorded as well for people to watch in the future. All right, Ronnie, anything else to start the meeting out with?
I think we'd like to start the meeting with presentation to our quarter trustee Jay Bieber. Thanking his own service to the board.
Come on up, Jay.
I don't see him.
I am standing, thank you.
So we, I think we did all the sentimental and mushy stuff unfortunately over video and probably did not do this just yet, but you know, we all wanted to take a moment again to thank you for your years of service. And I think we'll start with Ronnie who has actually put together a little call for us.
In your honor.
In your honor.
Okay, now this is not owed to Troy, but owed to Jay.
Could you sing it possibly?
Being a member of the board is a hard job to do, especially in Flower Hill where perfection must be lived up to. As the trustee Jay Bieber got it right, his wisdom and humor always at the leg. We will miss him as he steps down. His printing and PR expertise are renowned. But don't go yet, there's more to do. We're keeping you working on this stuff when you put it through.
Thank you.
All right, Jay, we got a little, little presentation for you too. But yeah, as Ronnie said, I mean, through, they think they over the last four years, five years now.
Well, there's a date on it.
Okay, well, there's a date on it, so Ronnie, you know, we were trying to figure out what to present to Jay and he's not, we didn't really think he were a clack person. So we went with.
White shots, I can't believe that.
I was taking the strike to go in there. To Jay Bieber with our gratitude for your service 2014 to 2021 on the Board of Trustees, so. Actually, especially thank you, Elaine, because she gave you up for all those years. And the late night forecall is keeping us safe through the past year and a half too. So much appreciated, Jay, thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
All right, so now into the business. We have a couple of public hearings on the agenda, so we'll start with those. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
I'm starting with the second?
Right.
Come here.
Okay, okay, will favor?
Aye.
So we have our first public hearing on the agenda and this is a public hearing that we have carried over the past several months as is on, you know, the methodology that we follow. And this is proposal law B regarding the far off of tax payments. The governor has given us the authority to defer tax payments beyond the original due date. This local law allows us to extend that date for an additional 31 days. So rather than taxes being due July 1, they have been extended to August 2nd. The local law has been published and as per all the regulations and rules of the state of New York. Is there any discussion?
This is one we talked about for a while and no comments. So can we take action on this one now?
Yes, there is a resolution. I agree that now let somebody to offer it in 2nd. Resolution enacting local law 2, 2021. We are as the Board of Trustees has determined that it is in the best interest of the village to defer tax payments for the governor's extension of the COVID-19 state emergency as it effect. This resolution can only act proposed local law P as local law 2, 2021. And we are as village of Flower Hill requires that taxes be paid no later than July 1 without penalty. Now village taxes will be accepted without penalty until Monday, November 2, 2021. And we are as the Board of Trustees has determined that it is the legal agency for the purposes of the SECPRA and has further determined that the consideration within local law is a type 2 action requiring no further action under SECPRA. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby adopt local law 2, 2021 and that this law shall take effect immediately. Now is there someone to offer that resolution in second?
I'll offer it, Ronnie.
I'll second.
Second, Mary Jo, okay. Okay, I will follow the board. Trustee Dorfman. Trustee Moderski.
Aye.
Trustee Collins. Deputy Mayor.
Aye.
Trustee James.
Aye.
Trustee Frankel, mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so moved. Next on our agenda is the global law that takes its first hearing. And this is amending the definition of home office. And the board has decided that since everybody ceased working from home and our original definition of home office was very, was rather restrictive. This changes the definition so that anybody can be working from their home. Just as a, as a note that if the business is the type of business that has customers, then they must go before the zoning board for grants of that kind of business. But for somebody just to work at home, the definition would be as follows. A home office is an office for studio, a practitioner, a professional business that is located within the dwelling which such person both owns resides in. And then there are other items that that go with that law that is incidental to the premises, but none of that changed. The only thing that changes is that we took out the word professional from the definition of a home office. Because, you know, not everybody's professional, obviously. And so we took off the language that says that a office can only be for the practitioner of a regular professional status position, then the doctor, captain, engineer, the like. That's all gone. As I said, this is the first reading of the law and I'll pass it over to the board for discussion.
Yeah, just for those who have not heard this discussion before, so obviously COVID has changed the way everybody works. Everybody's working from home now in kind of an office situation and it sounds like a lot of people are gonna be hybrid. So as part of that, we kind of looked at the code and tried to figure out is there anything we needed to update within it? And this is what was suggested. One question I had, Ronnie, is in reference to signs, do, or do we have a ban on signs in the residential area? Is this gonna allow people, if they do work out of their home, to put a sign on there?
We have a regulation in the code whereby as a professional, such as a doctor or a dentist, is allowed a sign and I believe it's something like, like a two foot by, by 10 inch sign, you know?
So this wouldn't touch that, that section then? This wouldn't impact the sign rules?
No.
Okay. Any, anything for the board, anything, anybody for the public wanna speak on this? All right, so we, this is the first public hearing, so wanna hold the public hearing over to the next one.
Motion to continue the public hearing at the July meeting? Open that motion. Trustee Frankel?
I'll second it.
Who's the second?
Myself.
Okay, you may, hold the favor?
Aye.
Next, we have another local, this new local law, local law C. This is a really interesting one. This is changing the definition of rear yard exclusive to a corner property. What we've been seeing at this, at the zoning board are many, many variants that be granted to corner lots. Because that by definition, they have two front yards and any kind of patio or pool or accessory structure will usually end up being in one of their front yards, even though truly they're side yards or rear yard. So this definition changes so that we add a sentence on the corner block. Accessory buildings and structures must be located in the rear and or side yards. So that will keep a lot of these cases, keep a lot of these building permits and asset rights permit and cut down, I think, a quite a few cases in the zoning board. This had been presented to the zoning board. They gave their input to Peter, Alves, your building inspector. They played the language a little, they discussed it, and now it comes to your redemption. I know our usual, yeah, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. So the, the previous definition always was on the corner lot, the rear lot is opposite the shortest side.
Correct.
Right? So I don't understand, isn't this kind of how we've always operated? That accessory structures are only permitted in their inside of corner lots or they weren't permitted inside?
They're not, they're not permitted in the side yard. So if you, if you had, say, the front door of the house was on the long side, their rear yard by, by the house relationship is really a side yard. So they would be prohibited from putting a patio there or a pool there around it if it fits, but often a patio. Couldn't put an accessory structure patio in a, in a side yard. So that's what this is addressing, allowing them to do it in either their side or rear yard of a corner lot. Because corner lots are already, you know, restricted by the fact they have two.
So technically we're considering now two rears and two fronts.
Or two rears, yeah.
And two fronts.
Yeah. Well, they're always the fronts, the front doesn't change.
Right, so instead of a side and a rear now, we technically have two rears. So there's no more side lot than in a corner property?
By, by what's permitted in it, yes, it's okay.
Right.
Still calling it a side and a rear, but for, for the purposes of.
No, I agree.
I know the couple shouldn't.
Well, we've talked about this before and I thought it makes sense that there should be some leeway down a corner property or that there should be a decision, I think there should be a decision that this is the side yard and this is the rear yard.
Well, the rear is the.
Rather than say we have two rear yards, I don't think we want to.
Yeah, so, so the rear yard is always the side opposite the shortest side, right?
Correct.
So Gary's saying, trusting Moderski saying is now you have, if you have two rears.
We're not calling, well, by, by what's written in, in the proposed change, it's not changing that, that there is a side and a rear. It's just allowing accessory structures like patio, patios and pools to be in the side and the rear.
You still have to declare a side yard.
Right.
So we're giving the benefit of a side, of a rear yard to side properties.
To, to, to allow accessory structures. I mean, we've had so recently where it's, the house is on the long side, they have a little patio off the back. They had a large area in what would be their side yard where, where there's a pool, they want to put a pool. It's on the interior of the lot, but by our definition, anything from, anything forward of the, of the side of the house is the side. So that, like definitely couldn't, couldn't use that.
I guess the question for me is should we redefine how we define a rear yard in a corner property? Rather than, I, I'm not sure what this is doing, seems.
It's allowing accessory structures.
It's a matter of semantics. So the bottom line is what this is doing is allowing for accessory structures to be in both what we used to call the side and the rear. If you wanna call them, you wanna change the definition on a, on a corner lot to be two rear lots or side, you could, you could do that too. But the, but what the, the effect is we're trying to do is allow corner lots which are already, you know, compared by the fact they have two front yards to, to use their property in a way that frankly, the zoning board has been granting on a regular basis.
But I guess in my, my view, I thought it was either one or the other, whether it's, okay, this is technically the side yard and we're gonna grant you. I guess the, for, for me, maybe the problem is, is that it's a slipper slip for me because then you're saying, well, they get a, they get extra, extra, they are allowed to do something on the side yard that wouldn't be allowed typically.
Well, all the same setbacks, all, all the same setbacks still apply, right?
Yeah, the setbacks, so whatever the setbacks are, in other words, by still calling it rear and side, you have the setbacks that apply to a rear and a side, they're not all the same. Some, usually the sides are eight or 10. With the rear, you know, sometimes the side on an R1, the side is 20. So it's still, the setbacks would still apply, but the differences between side and rear were just allowing those like a patio pool gazebos to be put into, into both the yards.
Which, which I'm saying is beyond what a normal, you know, a mid lot.
Well, it is, but I think it's a difference to a corner lot being, being restricted by the fact it has two front yards.
Well, if a mid, a mid lot or a mid, mid lot property wouldn't have that access on a side property, right? Like I couldn't think of one where somebody can try to put a pool on their side property unless they bought a second, second property.
Because let's say in a, our ones and our twos and maybe.
Depends on how big your property is, you get 3 acres, you could.
Yeah.
I guess the question for me is. I think it's fine, I mean.
Well, then you're giving. I think for me, it's, it's, I, I think like normally on a normal property, there's a front yard, there's a side yard, and then there's a rear yard. And the rear yard is where generally has been allowed these accessory structures. And now we're saying, well, it could be a rear yard or a side yard. And so technically someone's, it's gonna be someone's side yard facing that side yard rather than someone's backyard facing that side yard. I mean, on one side it might be a backyard, but on the other side, it's likely to be a side yard to, to that's.
I think what a corner lot would be the street.
Not, not necessarily.
If you have your house on the corner side, yeah, I got what you're saying. So what Gary's saying is you have two side lots, like side yards adjacent to each other, one of which because the house is a corner is now technically has the benefit of a rear yard. So you could put a patio in it, or it's normally you wouldn't have to put a patio in the side yard next to someone's side.
Right, I mean, there's a lot, there's obviously a logic that would prevail in this where someone would choose to, I mean, one point would be, okay, this is a front house, there's a rear house. That doesn't always necessarily have to be the case. What would make sense in terms of, I guess, someone's feeling of privacy on their property as opposed to feeling, and, and, and and the flip side, the neighbor's sense of privacy relative to that property as well. So I, I just, I, I think this is, for me, in my mind, it's like, okay, just side. Either that yard or that yard, but one of them has to be the rear yard, one of them has to be the side yard. And it shouldn't necessarily be dependent on the shortest length because that's what's got us into the trouble.
Well, just understand when you're saying there's side yards to the rear yard, there's always, every corner lot has a rear yard to someone's side yard.
Right.
So, so have that intrusion. And just to go back, the whole reason this came about is because we were getting these routine variances that came time after time and the board granted them. So when you have, when you have these variances that come before the board on a regular basis that are in looking back, almost automatically granted because of the conditions of corner lots, that's, that's why this was brought forward.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, it's not like we're trying to break something, it's just going by the history of, of the, the applications that have come before us and the fact that they're always granted. I mean, you know, they look at, they look at screening and all, and all the other things too, and they defer to, to the architecture review committee for those things also, but that's, that's why this came about, not that we're out of the blue just saying, you know, and, and that's, I think that's a test of why zoning should change. If, if things come before a zoning board on a regular basis and they're routinely granted, then it's, it's saying something about the zoning, maybe it should change, that's why it's here, right?
So just, let me, sorry, carefully, you're saying that there's been variances which have allowed accessory structures in one of the yards that might be a side yard as well as allowing for having pre-existing structures in what is currently.
And it's typically on the ones that, you know, the example I use where the, the front door is on the long side of the property. So that puts, that puts their, their, what could be their normal patio in the side yard.
Right.
Like at Spruce and Ridge Drive East, they have that with the, the long.
Excuse, I'm sorry, Mr. Schwartz, but we're on public record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just identify yourself, that's all, you can speak.
You, you have a chance to comment, but.
Just identify yourself, name and address, that's all.
Linda Schwartz, 15 Ridge Drive West. I was just thinking of the, um, the house that's on Spruce and Ridge Drive East and they have the screening of those very nice bushes and the long part is where the front door is on Spruce. That looks really beautiful.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that's what you were talking about.
Yes, yeah, well, either way, that's about ARC, so you know, it's gonna be reviewed case by case anyway, so.
Not necessarily, like it's just a deck or it might be generator, it wouldn't have to be.
Not a generator, but a deck and a patio, we'd put ARC.
Not always, I wasn't doing, you know, grade changes. But, you know, for patios, I kind of asked for screening, in any case, it was not there. Even if it doesn't go to ARC.
Are there other questions that come? This is the first public hearing, so we can beat this up some more in the interim, look at some properties around the village, but.
I, I mean, I pulled out like, I don't know, 30, 40 surveys of corner lots. If you wanna look at what the conditions are of different ones, but, but that, that's a typical one, the one I, I use as an example.
And as a point of interest, that the zoning board next week, we do have an accessory structure in the side yard of a corner lot.
I understand the point that when somebody needs a variance and it's always approved, it's like the town of North Hempstead parking. Every single project has our parking variance and everyone has approved, so why is there a preference? It's the same thing, you know, it's silly for us to make people go through that process of getting a variance when, you know, it's gonna get.
Yeah, and it makes for a correction.
And I think it's, it's better for the residents to not have to, you know, bear that experience because it's, it's close to a variance.
And the time.
And it's, it might be in the delay of pace in the driving.
Let's let Rhoda speak, Rhoda identify herself for the.
Okay, Rhoda Becker?
Just go.
Is there a reason where we should designate a certain, there are homes where the front door is obvious and in the back there is plenty of space. It depends on the particular lot and the size of the lot. And I think we should give some sort of condition if, if the backyard is large enough to include the designers, that would be the preference of the village rather than to move it arbitrarily to a side yard.
Okay.
I, I think just answer, I think if, if they had a very deep, if they're on a corner lot with a very deep yard, they're not coming to the zoning board because they have room to put those, those things in, in what's their rear, rear yard.
Of course.
But it, and it's tough to say, and it's also tough to write that into a ordinance to say, well, if you have 50 feet of depth, then you could, you can, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, for larger properties, corner lots, we don't, we don't, we have that issue.
All right, Peter, and you, something, something we consider is with, got it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Rhoda. Anybody else, anybody else from the public have comments? For the board? All right.
Motion to adjourn to the July meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, the second?
I'll second it.
Trustee, can you second it? Hold the favor?
Aye.
Okay, the third local law is, that we have on the agenda is a proposal law E. E, yeah, E. Regarding the opting out of licensing established retail cannabis dispensaries and or onsite cannabis consumption established establishments within the village.
So before we get started, I recuse myself at the April meeting from this debate discussion. I'm going to do the same thing, I'm just gonna read a pre-statement for the record since this is the first public hearing. So the village code in Flower Hill prevents elected officials in the village from participating in the debate or voting on any issue that could have a personal or that they can have a financial interest in. My company that I work for sells equipments that's used in indoor cultivation of crops and therefore there can be a perceived conflict here. I would therefore be recusing myself from the debate around the cannabis opt out or opt out. So I'm gonna walk out of the meeting and I'm gonna let Randall handle this portion of the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Good morning.
All right, so last month we brought up this post-local law and we had a pretty good discussion on it. I know I circulated a lot of information, everybody, from the various, the NICO webinar I attended. Also, I don't think it was on the last month's NCTO meeting, but they had a pretty good presentation from Tom Levin of Mark Swozey, Leshon Klein, also going over the intricacies of the law, opting out, what happens if the village doesn't opt out. Personally, everybody I've spoken to so far has pretty much had no interest in Flower Hill having a store or a place to consume marijuana. You know, we're here as a board to represent a world of people and as I said, I haven't really brought in a single person who's in favor of this, so. My general opinion, it's a good local law. It allows us to, I mean, the, the good thing about this, the way the law is written from New York State, if we don't opt out by the end of 2021, we're forever allowing marijuana facilities in the village. And by opting out now, we're controlling their own destiny. So if it's something that for some reason, the future board, a year, five years, 10 years wants to do, you know, it gives them that opportunity to then opt back in. But by not opting out, we've cemented the marijuana facilities in the village. So I mean, to me, it makes a lot of sense to want to opt out. Interesting points I have here. There was discussion last time about the, the tax benefit. It's, it's kind of middle, I mean, the village would get a small percentage of it and there's a possibility the village would then have to share that revenue with the town of North Hempstead. So what could have been maybe 3%, now possibly becomes 1.5%. Is there have been some people who have mentioned the fact of wanting to have these, these additional revenues, but they're not as big as I assumed they could have been. There's something called a permissive voter referendum. So in essence, if this board does vote to opt out of the local law, residents could then petition to overrule the decision of this board, the local law of this board. And then if they got enough people to be on petition, it would then go for a public vote, for the residents to vote. This is kind of a very rare opportunity for residents to overturn some local law that were enacted. And it gives, listen, if the residents are, are so wanting the facility, then it just gives them that, that opportunity. And then lastly, there were questions of what the village can't ban. And one of it is public consumption. I know there was concern of, okay, if we have these types of facilities in the village, then people are then gonna be able to start smoking all over and having to stop them. The only place the village can ban public consumption of marijuana is in the village property. So in this case, it would be the village hall and it would be in the village park. But we could not outlaw smoking on the streets, just like we, we can't right now to ban it.
Anybody on the board, questions, comments? Apparently there was, there was comment after last month's meeting by a resident that this was not explained properly and this opting out was something that we created ourselves to allow us to change our mind later. So can you just clarify that this opting out rule was not invented by the village?
No, no, this is part of our state. This is a New York state. It's part of the 128, I get to say 128 pages, it's a 128 page bill. So part of that bill gives the local municipalities the opportunity to opt out of the sale. But it's, it's by the state, it is not by the village, it's not by the town, it's not by the county.
Right.
It's not by the city. It, this is specifically part of the state law.
The inference by this person that this was something that we created to be able to opt out and will is not something we created, just to clarify, it's not every municipality in state.
Every municipality has the opportunity to opt out and part of the law, it allows the residents, as I said, with the permissive referendum, to then overrule what the board did if that's something that they feel strongly, let's say, for.
So we did not design this rule to preserve our right to opt out?
No, this is part of. No, this is part of the state law, but thank you for asking that.
I just wanna add that, if there had been any comment to that, it was that the receipt's village law.
That was gonna be the next question, so since the last meeting, since the last village meeting. But right, since the last meeting, we haven't received any correspondence for or against this local law, correct? You haven't received.
No correspondence whatsoever.
Not to the village, right?
Not to.
There has been correspondence circulating in the village.
Right.
So it would not be anything official?
Right.
And it's not factual anyways, it's, oh, okay.
All right.
Any other questions?
So I'll, I'll ask if anybody from the public have questions, comments, concerns? Yes, Mr. Schwartz?
I'm here.
Your, your name and address, please, for the record.
Mitchell M. Schwartz, fifteen Ridge Drive West. I am in full support of us opting out. I, I, I feel that the benefits of opting out outweigh the cons. I understand it's a somewhat contentious issue, but I am in full, I am in full favor, I am fully in favor of us opting out, which the board decides to do so.
Thank you, sir. Nobody else? I do have to say, I'm a little disappointed, Frank, that there are some residents who feel the need to send letters to other residents, that they don't even show up at these meetings to express their concerns.
Well.
Or formally send those concerns to the board.
There are a lot of mental health issues in the world right now, I would hate to be involved in that.
All right, well, if we haven't any more comments on this subject, I guess I need to make a motion to adjourn this next month.
To the July meeting.
And then a second motion to close the public hearing, or the second?
Yeah, that's.
I'll, I'll make both motions right now, one to adjourn the public, uh, this, this local law, this discussion to the July meeting, and the second one to close the public, uh, meetings.
And I believe we need to continue the public meeting to the next session. Will the board be entertained for the discussion at the next session?
Yes.
Yes. So I think one of the.
Yes, I, I need to close the, 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 the public hearing in tonight's, in tonight's meeting.
Of course.
I'm trying to do two for one.
I adjourned, I adjourned the local law to July.
And do we have a second moment? Hold on a second, okay. Just be there for me, hold on a favor. Okay, so can you get the pen?
I will get it on my way out. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, thanks, thank you, Rhoda. Thank you.
All right, we will now resume with the, uh, regular meeting.
Yes, and I think we're going to, um.
He's so slight.
Here, from residents, only the regulars, Neil, actually, following this to, um, top best Eagle Scout project. I love this.
I do, I also think I need a.
Um, yeah, just let the board know we are here.
Okay, uh, my name is Brandon O'Neill, I'm from Golden Five Cardinal Road. Uh, I am a resident of Flower Hill and a life scout troop seven, and I'm planning my Eagle Scout for advancement. So I propose a beautification community service project located at the second lot off Port Washington Boulevard on the north side of Country Club Drive, and I envision a respectful, peaceful space in a land with the needs and preferences of the Flower Hill community. And I would like to create and install a memorial stone to honor the original buried individuals, plus the loved ones from the Flower Hill that, that we have lost, especially those from the COVID since 2020. And this most requires some historical research of public records, since limited information is available on the internet. And, uh, the labor to do this project will be provided by the scout volunteers, and, uh, for budgets, budgets would be limited to, to require, uh, expenses for materials, supplies, equipment, and professional labor if needed. And I would guess that the expenses would be in the order of fifteen hundred to twenty-three hundred dollars for a one-to-two day project. And I would need to meet with village authorities to finalize the details of my plan. Uh, so please agree to support this meaningful, uh, and respectful, respectful community project.
Excuse me, um, where did you say it was? I'm sorry, I just.
Uh, it's in the second lot of Country Club Drive.
The second lot of cemetery.
It's the Flower.
You only know this is a cemetery in the block. You mean that off of all the woods where you?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, I know, yeah, okay.
So, Brandon, thank you for coming down tonight and, and telling us to the board. Um, so for, this is, this like worked out perfectly, because we have our village historians here, Rhoda Becker and, uh, Mitchell Forts, and actually, Mitchell and Rhoda put together, and, and Mitchell's giving this presentation a little bit, uh, right after this action, on a historic trail idea, that this, this is one of the sites that's talked about from there. So it'd be good for you to connect with them afterwards, to learn a little bit more about it, and you can probably help them out with some of their research that's ongoing, right? Um, but, uh, wanna just open up to the board for further questions here. Um, I think it sounds like a really nice idea, it's, right, a lot, I think a lot of people drive by and don't even realize that there's a cemetery there, um, so it'd be nice to have some recognition and let the community know what, what actually is going on there. And I think coordinating with historians would be, would be great on this. But any, anybody else from board have a question, or thoughts on this?
No, we, we still clean up, well, we have another Eagle Scout to clean up, probably fifteen years ago. And, uh, that was very successful, I mean, they did a really good job, so I'm glad they have somebody who can take another shot.
Was this your?
Uh, my, after I was having some trouble last year figuring out an Eagle Scout project due to COVID, I was able to ask my scout master, and he gave me some guidance on this project, I do.
That's great.
Thank you, Father. Uh, yes, that is my father.
You should, you should be a better project, so.
That's great.
It's a great project.
It's a great project.
It's a great project.
So, so Brandon, where you put your imports and I could be sure, you can report to the project.
Yeah. Yes, uh, and though, and right now, it has not been approved by another Eagle Scout board, so I'm not gonna be planning like everything right now, but, uh, once that's approved, then we can start getting some more momentum with the project.
But we can, we can provide you with support, Rich, you, whatever they bring out, you can probably take away.
Correct.
After they go off. This way you don't have to fall out of all the debris, all of the branches, or whatever's back, that haven't been back very long.
Yes.
But at least Rich can support you with whatever you pull out, he can get rid of it for you.
And you said that you are estimating the maximum cost to be how much?
Uh, I said it might be around fifteen hundred to twenty-three hundred dollars.
Okay, and that, I assume probably mostly is the, the memorial stone, or?
Yes, that's mostly the plaque and the memorial stuff.
Okay. Um, so I think you, you said this needs further approval, so I think if we wanted to, we could approve this, and then, uh, you can back to us on whether you get the board approval, and, um, and then you can work on finalizing the plan with, with Rich and our historians here, and then come back to us with the report.
At the same time, after they do this wonderful cleanup, I think we should possibly consider some sort of fencing to keep the sites, because Rich will tell you, people have been dumping junk back there, it's all junk.
Yeah.
All the time.
And, you know, you know, nobody sees it happening, and I'm thinking, it doesn't necessarily have to be a metal fence, it could be one of those, uh, I forgot the name of this, the, the horse fence.
Stockade.
Thanks, if you did a stockade fence.
Horse rail.
Are you a union?
Horse rail.
Yeah. Slender, whatever, yeah.
Of course, yes. Um, I know the cost of those are, are, are a lot less, and it will keep the bad people away from, from the parks. It's something maybe we should consider.
The cemetery.
The cemetery, thank you.
Mitchell, you have a thought?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I know that the Montford Cemetery in Port, which is nationally on the National Register of Historic Places.
Mm-hmm.
I know if, the question of, if we get a fence, is that going to affect its historic status, should we ever decide to do something with it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it should be a problem, so I just wanted to make that point.
I would venture to say that it was originally a fence around the cemetery, you know? That, that would have been typical for those times.
Well, I have another question, something you brought up in the past. Is this something the board wants to consider having a landmark, because I do not believe that.
Yes.
I do not believe that the cemetery has any landmark protection.
No, that's, that's absolutely, we need to look at that.
Yeah.
So, the, does the village actually own the property?
Yes, and currently, we took over ownership, I wanna say two thousand eleven, from the town of North Hempstead.
Correct.
I did. I was actually going to do this, so.
It would be wise to landmark to protect it.
Okay, sure.
So let's make that part of the process, once they clean it up, and then get it all beautiful, let's start working on the landmarking of this.
So, do we need, uh?
Yeah, right, right, right.
Do we need a motion or a resolution?
Um, yeah.
Or a motion or a tax?
So, uh, so perhaps if the board was considering this, it would be, I forgot your name, I'm so sorry.
Brandon.
That, that the board could approve Brandon's proposal with respect to his Eagle Scout project, subject to further approvals that he said he needs from, which do you think is God?
Yeah, Eagle Scout board.
Eagle Scout board. Because they may have some tweaks or suggestions that. Yes, that, that this board would consider a motion to approve the proposal as, as presented by Brandon, subject, uh, to a further approval by the Eagle Scout review board and certain modifications as they propose.
All right, I will make that motion.
I will start in there.
Okay, hold on a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get to it, sure. Say it.
Thank you, thank you, Brandon.
All right, um, we're gonna mess with the agenda a little bit more here, um, and I think we're gonna allow our historians to go here. Um, and Mitchell's got the presentation on the, uh, I, what do, what do we call it, is it the historic trail, or, there's so much information.
Our village's historic ground surprise for all of us.
Okay. All right, go ahead. Take it away, Mitchell.
All right, good evening, all. Well, so you do not know me, which I mean, I'm presumably all good by now. My name is Mitchell Schwartz, I'm one of our two village historians. Um, my proposal, the Flower Hill Historic Trail, would establish a village-wide recreational trail system, making all the villages parks, greens, scenic overlooks, museums, and historic sites. It would also serve as a means of identification for our historic assets and reeds bases. All the places would be connected by navigable routes, and would consist of multiple routes. There are multiple goals associated with this project. One goal is to ensure the preservation of the important, fascinating history of the village of Flower Hill, Long Island, New York, for the benefit of current and future generations. Furthermore, it aims to create a thorough and expandable system which seeks to better identify, preserve, and utilize our historic assets for the benefit of the community, and to encourage the public to continue to take pride in our village through our various historical assets. Another goal is to encourage both younger and older people to understand, learn about, appreciate, and to take pride in our local history in a fun and engaging way, to remind people, especially young people, as to why local governments are so important and impactful, and why it's so important to get taught them. And frankly, I believe that nonpartisan projects like these, which are designed wholly for the benefit and enjoyment of a community, are the perfect way to, to go about doing so. And to encourage people to exercise by walking and jogging between different sites among multiple routes to choose from. People can even choose based on what interests them most, and can enjoy it either alone or in group. Furthermore, we can. Other municipalities that wish to identify and preserve. It's amazing how a small little village like ours has such a deep history, and we can set an example for others looking to take advantage of and promote their historical assets. Lastly, if Brandon touched upon, just touch upon this. This proposal conceives a long-proposed landmark in the Flower Hill Cemetery. It could be designated as a Village of Flower Hill Historical Site, and an application can even be filed to have it listed on the National Register of Historic Places and/or as a countout Peninsula Historical Society Landmark. This project could also aim to designate the Elder Fields Preserve, which is owned by Nassau County, as a village landmark, and that would be with the anticipated collaboration between us and the county of Nassau. And we could deeply lobby and try and work with them to get it onto the National Register as that property, as the Goulet, Montson Williams House actually rivals the, uh, Van Ashen Starkens House in Jopan Plaza. In preparation for this meeting, you receive the following. The main presentation, which this speech is adapted from. The main route guidebook, and a list of proposed points of interest and the three future plaques, being a nine eleven memorial plaque, a Goulet home set plaque, and a Montson real estate office plaque. While these three future plaques have been included with the other initial points of interest, they will be marked as future until they're ordering an installation when funds eventually become available. And as such, they would be deferred until that point. Additionally, the list of places emailed to you includes a link to the map with main routes. Following this meeting at some point tonight or tomorrow, probably tonight, you will receive, you will be emailed a folder containing all seven route guides. Said email will also contain the route, the links to all seven maps. These files and links were not included in, in the email a few days ago, as they are redundant. Although I will now hand the board a copy of the Wasm guidebook, in case you wish to look through it. Um, the main route connects to all locations. All other routes are refined to a certain category, i.e., the notable streets route only includes the locations involved in our village's notable road-related infrastructure, including entrances and dead ends. Or they are refined to a specific route in our village, for example, the Roseland route, which only includes the points of interest which are within the area of the village certified by the Roseland Free School District. These will be the documents and links to be made public through a news update on the village website and or the Facebook page within the first couple of days following approval, and eventually through the future history section of the website. The total number of locations and points of interest on the Trail Story app will be one hundred and five. And that includes the three future plaques. The proposed routes, the main route, the parks, museums, and overlooks route, which will connect to all parks, gardens, museums, and scenic overlooks. The Manhasset Route, Port Washington Route, and the Roseland Route, which will be for the Manhasset, Port Washington, and Roseland Free School District respectively, or at least where the area serves within Flower Hill. The notable streets route, which as Alba mentioned, will connect all notable roads and all related roadway infrastructure, i.e., former cul-de-sacs and notable dead ends, et cetera, in the village, you'll love that one, Rich. And the old trolley route, which connects all of the former New York North for Attraction Company's trolley infrastructure within local, which is now Flower Hill. The project will be implemented in two phases. Phase one will be the main phase, obviously, and that will. It was part of phase one, the historical trail, plans of interest. It just proves. Then, phase one be. News update and post on the village's website and or Facebook page could be posted, yada, yada, yada. That's basically what I just said a few minutes ago, just sharing it with the community. And then phase two would be following the approval of this phase, and it could, it would involve, eventually, when funding becomes available, the plaques, or even possibly even benches, should we choose to purchase one or two. And we would also include the landmarking process, and as Alba mentioned, would be two properties, which would be, in, in my opinion, would be and of, um, interest towards the landmarking, those would be the cemetery and Elder Fields, or at least the Goulet, Montson Williams House. And in conclusion, I hereby formally request that it be spread upon the minutes of this meeting that Ms. Becker's knowledge was a major inspiration to this project, and that Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum was an invaluable source of assistance in planning this meeting. I thank you.
I just want the board to know, this young man, and for so long, has come through the basement, brought up these boxes covered in dirt that we, we didn't even know, that were buried as a pile of other things.
Totally worth it.
I, I mean, he just amazes me. I am a big fan of this young man.
And some of those boxes are then cleaned off and brought into my house.
Well, thank you to, to the entire family then, for letting Flower Hills happen to this resource.
Yeah, it's very great, I mean.
So is there gonna be a graphic in, in the final, like a map showing where each of these locations?
Yep, it's, it's, that's what the, um, in the list that Randall emailed out, on the top of that list, there's a link to it.
Oh, and it's good.
Yeah, it's cool, that's why I said.
As you were told, the.
No, it's good, it's in your app, it's, it's great.
New York State Department of Education has a, an art class division that has many grants that, that may be available, and they may be something that, you know, right up our alley, and, and, you know, getting this to snowball, for publishing, for, uh, historical plaques. Um, you know, we'll take, I'll take a look at that, I mean, we'll talk. Thank you, Juan.
There's also maybe a grant available.
That's what I'm saying.
Sarah Grant.
They have grants.
Um, so I'm gonna look for a person, beautification committee here, because I'm like. Yeah, and Gary's gonna be, well, I'm, I'm thinking how, how does the beta beta walk, that you could talk about, maybe link up to this. Yeah, no, I think, I think this, this is great, um, this is really great, I mean, terrific research, and the, the wealth of information you shared with us is, is just astounding. So, um, I was really pleased to read it and, and learn more, and, and then see how, yeah, we, you know, we've been talking about, on the Parks and Beautification Committee, how we could extend, um.
That's no, we have a walking path that goes along Stony Town, I've been talking. How it feels like about how can we make it better and longer and really engage other parts of the village. And this is a great way to do that, is to be able to connect all these points and make it something that people can actually not just be proud of, but as you pointed out, be active in as well, so. I'm really, really just tickled thinking about what you've done here.
I think.
And I would love to dig in more on this and see how we can, I mean certainly as Ronnie said, there's a lot of opportunities to find money to support this. This is the kind of thing that people will support on a state level and hopefully not on a county level as well. I think that would be great, we could get the county to do some of the things you talked about, because I think for sure that the art built on Elder Fields is another key point. I guess Comnet is a landmark?
Yep, Sam's Williams House was landmarked, oh gosh, I think of the nineties, it's.
Yeah.
It's a Village of Flower Hill Historical Site, it's one of three Village of Flower Hill Historical Sites, there's Sam's Williams. There's the George W. Denton House on West Shore Road and there's the Mason Drive, oh, tree off, obviously, off Mason Drive. And it's also, it's also listed on the National Register.
Maybe I missed, because I, at some point, I, there was just so much information I had to gloss over a couple things, but maybe I missed it and you covered it. What I was interested in is, did you look much into the history of St. Francis? Because that's, that's an interesting.
Of course I have.
That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother.
My bestie here. Corin and I love the story. We could think of a bunch of cruising, we could think of a bunch of drunken men in a friendship for its existence.
Because I think that would be another good tie-in, I mean certainly existing with St. Francis, having them as a onboard with us on this as well, could carry a lot of weight and I think fits into what you've described as sort of this landmarks trail, scenic trail. So I think it's all great, it's a lot of work, obviously, that you did and it's a lot of work to bring it to fruition. We understand that, but I think you've given us some structure to look at that we can get excited about. We'll have to obviously review it, see what we can bite off and chew at this point, but I think it's a great document to have and certainly we'll wanna keep it on record and published and whatever we need to do to maintain that integrity of it so that we have that as a constant guide for, not just for this board, but for future boards.
So you mentioned some of that signs, so are you thinking about like markers, like historic markers? So. Probably, obviously.
Yeah.
So Howard, I'm a commissioner for North End City, Land Management Commissioner, and Howard was on board for many years with us. And Howard has an amazing ability to find resources for those type of things. So you may want to speak to Howard and see if he knows of some of these grants that are available for signage. I don't know if, if you're, I don't know what the rules are as far as what the signage can say if it's not a designated landmark. And I don't know how we can designate like a. Well, I guess we can, it doesn't have to be a building or physical structure, right?
There must be.
It can be.
There must be rules.
There are set rules, so, you know, maybe, you know, we can come up with a way like Ronnie said, to find some money and put markers around.
But then again, that's just phase two, phase one, that's easy to exploit.
Well, you have to phase four.
I don't know, the board is aware, we have a chapter in our code inside of Landmark Commission.
Yeah, no, I don't.
Yeah.
Have to look for three.
Right.
We don't have one.
Yeah.
If it was a two.
Can I just add too, I know that we've been covering the agenda a little bit here, but as far as sustainability can be though, we consider inventory, we were also talking about forward-looking projects and they're specifically looking for projects that in form and design we are, we keep this all squarely in that space, especially in particular, you know, for you green spaces and connecting it all together, I can make another plan here too.
Good work. That's great.
So why don't we all take time to review this and I guess what we look to do is the next meeting maybe approve phase one as far as like, you know, these sites seem good, continue on down this path. I mean, especially with everybody, I feel like everybody's walking now, right? Because of COVID, everyone started walking, but still, you see, like, just to be able to like in your community kind of follow along, you know, well, did you notice about Elder Fields Road or, you know, Mason Drive or whatever, just makes it more interesting and it helps get kids and their community and things like that, so.
Do we have to wait, do we have to wait months? Yeah, there might be some, we're talking about naming some of the creative spaces. I think it would be good if everybody waited to make sure. Are any of these things on private property, on people's property? No, 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 we specifically.
Interesting.
We specifically, I work with Mitchell on this, anything that was in a village right of way but on someone's property, because that gets a little. We removed it from the front consideration.
Yeah.
But Mitchell just bring up a good point, we could also do QR codes, which is really easy.
Yeah.
They take up no space, stick a QR code, most people figure out, use their phone.
Yeah, that's.
I mean.
It's small and it's to the point.
There are a couple of houses, but those are just in the street.
I think we should do the QR code no matter what.
Yes. Yeah, that's why, that's why we should decide it really easy.
The houses, there are set rules. They have to use the materials that we used long ago. You can't have aluminum or some of the metals that we use now. So there are set rules, these things. I was just talking the other day, we meet here Julie Sunday at twelve or about one thirty if. That we have to look up rules, but certain places you might consider historical can be because of the materials that are used. The inside you can use anything you want, the outside. And I ran into this. Years ago, and we didn't get that land modeled because we did not allow metal windows.
Alright, so then we'll take our time to digest this and we'll bring it up at the next meeting again. Thank you, Mitchell, and welcome to the entire family. Appreciate anybody who volunteered to do this. Alright. I think we'll go back to the regular agenda now. So first thing is approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on, there's one, I think one addition from.
Yeah, there is one correction. Two minutes, and that would be on. Resolution number twenty-two, introducing separately several local laws and the correction to the Bay of Barrington refused because of professional.
Conflict.
Conflict.
That was wrong. You made a motion to.
Yeah, would you like to make that motion there, Peter?
Yes, I'm gonna make the motion to.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay, claims. Anybody, any questions on any of the claims? I think being none, I'm going to get some more to prove.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second it.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I guess you have to go to the total.
Yeah.
By the way, I just have to say that I never would have thought I would hear Gary say tickle. What'd you say?
Tickle pink.
Coming, that was crazy. You must be excited.
I'm so really excited.
Alright, the Architect Review Committee meeting of May twenty-fifth. I think there were eight items on the agenda. We had a returning application, one thirty-five Woodhill, which still has some additional comments on that design that did go to zoning for a side yard aggregate that they were approved by zoning, but they continue with the ARC. New house at fourteen day body heights, that was their first meeting, we had some comments on that, roof lines and so forth, we'll be coming back on the next meeting. Forty-six pinlock, which is an addition to next year alterations. Mostly foot alterations, we had some comments on that, we asked them to come back. Another new house, forty-four on the lane, had a sort of long list of comments for the architect and asked to come back on that. Three seventy-five door in the lane, approval conditions, we had a couple minor comments that they were gonna correct on those items. Six crab tree, front exterior alterations and a rear covered patio. The rear patio was approved, the front elevation, we had a number of comments on some of the detailing materials, window details, so forth. We asked them to come back to that part. Seven east aisles additions, an older house, it is some very simple additions, that was approved as submitted. Thirty-four crab tree, a one-story garage addition. We asked some of the stones to be reduced, they had a belt course of stone under the windows, so we asked them to carry that through the center, which originally showed its full height. I can got those drawings, so they comply with that. That's my report for the Architect Review Committee. Speaking historically, I just want you to know, the Sands Wildhouse, the County Historical Society, they have a project that's been ongoing, they've been rebuilding the porch that was deteriorated. I was there last week, they're getting close to finishing up on that and they said they're gonna have like a little ceremony when they reopen.
Here, oh, you finished?
Yep.
What's going on with gas station, Schmidt?
They're rebuilding their tanks, just the tanks, yeah.
I was gonna go, I had to.
And the islands are being moved up.
Okay, any improvements to the building? Frank, I think it's historical. No, I haven't seen it, I called, I called Chuck, I saw him on, I didn't. I made the.
Oh, a question of that quarter two, did we get anything from Rita, any more from Rita? I mean, you talked about submitting something, we met.
He's coming with, he wanted to do something on the islands, mostly outside of his property. Like planters, a little fenced area.
Okay.
I don't know how you handle it, it's all outside the property. Some of it's on the state right of way, some of it is, you know, is ours or not.
I mean, if he's got a proposal to unify the village, I think our certification, you can take it under.
I mean, because Frank, you know, some of his funding is over the line.
I was more worried about his third quarter that he was trying to spice up and.
What about some landscape?
We might see something, so, okay.
If they do a major construction, they very often then remove from their grandpa that.
Who's this?
From the gas station at the corner.
Oh.
Middle Road, where they have it all done up. They remove their grandfathered position. It happened in Moneros years ago, where they wanted to redo their plumbing. And in that, they had to adhere to the new village laws, not to the old village requirements, which at that time meant anybody could park any place. So check what the new guidelines are as to whether they meet the new standards or can still use their old standards. They are grandfathered.
Yeah, I mean, they're replacing their, you know, the underground tanks that, you know, they have to do.
But that's major.
By Nassau County requirements and stuff.
Yeah, but it's still can be major. New York State will know. And that's what we did with Moneros. We called somebody in and they checked it and made a determination. There was enough work being done on it. They now put it here to the new standards.
Yeah, I know if underground tanks are deployed because it's the DEC and it's an environmental issue, especially if the tanks are, don't need to current.
Yes, but that does not mean. So was redoing the plumbing environmental issue. It has to do with the quantity of work that's done and which thing it falls under.
Alright, I think it's worth the threshold.
I'd like, I'd like him to say.
For the paint.
Yeah, I'm not asking for a lot of truck, I just some paint would be nice.
Yeah, well, what's interesting is that as the gas station was, it was not compliant, there did not need setbacks in part of their second iron that was on the main road, was in village right of way. But with the new tank, everything will be within per setback, so they're coming into compliance.
And even reparking other vehicles there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Because that's.
That's another option.
Alright, ARC report then, any questions, comments on the ARC, on the properties that are on the ARC?
Okay, motion to approve the air supply tanks? Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Uh, Peter, you're not done yet?
The community meeting space, we got the bids.
Oh.
We got bids.
We got bids, we got a little bid.
We got a little bid, I mean, yes, of course you have a little.
Yes, we got a three bid.
And I think it's a good bid.
Okay, do we have any other things to write?
Uh, I think Richard's been fond of.
He did get back some money.
Okay.
We're, we're, yeah. So if I was correct, the little bid was from the Laurel Group at nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, so to get a resolution.
That was the high bid.
Okay, so what is.
It ended in zero.
No, it has no, sorry.
That was the high bid.
That was. That was a high bid, what's low?
What happened?
Low bid's seventy-three hundred, seven thousand three hundred.
Alright, we're gonna put a pin in this one. Can you two figure out which is the little bid and give them their photo, Ronnie, so that we can get the resolution right?
You have the.
No, yeah, seventy-three, seven thousand three hundred.
Jamie here?
No, this is St. And then second came in Jamie here, he had seventy-six hundred and Laurel's came in at nine thousand.
Yeah, Laurel Group's having low bid, doesn't seem.
Yeah, I'm very.
Big to the same.
I know you said Laurel was tight, that's why I was reading this, I'm like, is this right?
No, it's seventy-three.
Alright, so Scotty had seventy-three hundred.
Scotty, which we know?
It's, it's one of his guys who was.
I know, they have so many companies.
Yeah, it's one of their guys, but he's at seventy-three hundred. I just gotta make sure that the price.
Alright, so when that comes to a way, you can.
We gotta double check, the price was done several months ago and. Okay. We know materials have gone up, so some concrete is, especially at the.
We don't have the date, we don't have the date, so.
Alright, so we confirm that and.
But like, you know, the flag is on water, we should get it within the month. So maybe we can do something with the flag, or we can maneuver the cutting to get it and shut it.
Yeah, the other part of the sprinkler system.
I haven't before yet.
We have technical guy for the, the lawn sprinklers that we worked.
Yeah.
And then we have a landscaping aspect to it also.
Well, excuse me, so who, Richard might have said, who was spearheading the landscaping aspect of it?
Ian Frank.
Oh, she is, oh, yeah.
So do we have an overall budget then?
We have, well, that's the patio, the sprinklers are.
About thirteen hundred dollars.
About thirteen hundred and I think we had about four to five thousand for landscaping.
When we originally discussed this, I think we thought on the high side it could be up to twenty thousand and based on the conversations they had, they got it down below fifteen.
So we're like twelve or thirteen then?
Yeah. But given the low bid was, trying to get this third bid, I mean, Peter and Rich, I mean, must have talked to another ten or fifteen places. People are so busy that they couldn't get a bid, so they just wanna, you're gonna reconfirm that that bid is.
It's small, yeah, I'm sure it won't go, it won't be that much.
We also have the purchase of benches too.
The benches?
The benches.
Those are about five, six hundred dollars.
Another thousand, twelve hundred.
Alright. So reconfirm that and then we'll authorize this phase for the next meeting. Sorry about that, folks.
Can we go ahead with just the sprinklers to get that going or?
Yeah.
So.
Alright.
Okay.
Works superintendent?
Do you want me to call Steve?
Um, no.
Do we have anything for him right now? Do we have anything for him right now?
Just a little bit.
Yeah, so the road opening, uh, the, the road opening. The bid for the twenty twenty-one road project has been noted. Um, the opening is so in the end of the month. Friday.
Because next week they're putting, they're putting up.
It's in the paper this week.
So next week they're putting up.
Right, it's, right, the following, it's only three weeks before they open the bid. Um, the project is going out for, I think there's a, how much money?
It's four seventy-five, and, well, that's with National Bridges.
Right, including the National Bridge work, which we have back on.
All right, so we'll look to approve that at the, the next meeting.
We've already approved going out, we've already approved going out to bid.
We'll update everybody on the awarding of that bid at July meeting. All right, engineers report, that's. Go ahead, Ronnie.
Okay, um, President wanted to get approval, courses Williams are four per, so attend the annual Port Third Conference in Albany this year. Uh, the cost is eight hundred eighty-three dollars. Okay, a motion for that?
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Second, first, Janice, hold on a paper. Okay, thank you. Um, next we got a request for block party, uh, Dartmouth Lane between Mason and Rockwood for Saturday, June eighteenth. And that got me thinking that we always, I always have certain directors ready, group that's planning a home in block party. And, um, I'll put it into a policy that is in your packet. So we never had anything formalized, this is just, you know, things that I would tell them that they need to do. So, um, I think that a motion approving that policy, I appreciate it.
Um, question. I think in the past, because I remember having block party, they would supply the sawhorses.
We don't have any sawhorses, matter of fact, we sent them over to the police to get them, and the police don't have any.
I was gonna say, they don't have, we don't have the big cone, we don't have anything, the big, the big cones anymore.
I'm hesitant to use cones because they disappear.
Yeah. No, the ba, the ba, I call cones, the barrels, the big barrels.
Okay, like, like Jersey barrier?
The orange, the big orange, it's a big orange.
They got all the company.
They look like fifty-five gallon drums, don't we have those anymore?
We have, we have the sawhorses with the, with the full, you know, reflective orange on it. Just the sawhorses.
How many?
Maybe three or four.
We all need two, one for each end of the street.
Right, so I don't, because I, I don't think.
Because I hesitate, I just want them to park on cars at the end.
No, we definitely don't want that, but I, I thought in the past we supplied barricades, so I rather the ones we have.
Are the ones we use on Sunday though? That's, that's those.
Yeah.
That's what I, I really.
Those are farmers.
Yeah, they'll have, have like three or four of those.
Those are perfect. Yes, change the policy please, thinner again, please, no, yeah, we should always supply. Let's hope we have more block parties at least. Gary's definitely.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Gary, you don't have a block party here.
You don't get out, you don't get out of the.
My neighbor.
The other, uh, the, um, topic of parties. What's going on with the country club and parks?
Uh, maybe.
Have they moved it?
Yeah, yeah, they don't want to.
Hey, that was the last one, Frank, you weren't paying attention.
I guess I wasn't.
Be watching the hockey, just visiting.
I'm not watching the hockey, if it is five three, I'm not.
Um, we settled, ask you for motion, uh, policy, and, um,
Five three.
And to approve block party on Dartmouth?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'm anticipating myself.
Gary's.
This is Gary's three. Hold on a paper?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Um, and that's it for me.
So, so that approval was for the block party environment and for the block party policy?
Correct.
Just being clear, that's all, all right. Jeff?
Yes, um, I have two matters to discuss tonight. One, in your packet, you'll see a draft agreement with Altis. Um, you'll recall that the gentleman was here for the best of, um, and had explained the board, the purpose of, their proposal, the construct was called, was called a, a roll, it's a, a remote optic light terminal, and essentially it's a cabinet that they intend to put in, in the public right of way off Stony Town near Flower Hill Park. They forwarded a proposed agreement, I got the chance to look through the agreement. By Frank's family made one change to, which would be that, um, if this board was to approve, it would be subject to them also obtaining appropriate permits through the village, which, which they would still need to obtain. Um, a couple of things to bear in mind, which is that this would remain their property, that they would indemnify the village. Um, the difference between this and other licenses that the village can grant, and I just want this number of records, normally we will have in there that the, the property could be removed at the cost of the village at any time. Given the circumstances of this, it's sort of unique because they, they already have a franchise agreement with the village. They're allowed to maintain utilities that can further the business, that's part of the agreement. So they would be opposed to having a provision in here that we could say at any time, you must remove the, the device. So they're not in agreement with that. I think the consistent with the already existing franchise agreement, that it is fair not to have the provision in here that the village could order them to remove it at any time. The type of device that they will be putting up consistently with their work.
I think they put a few up around there, and they, they're huge, and they put giant yellow bollards to protect it.
Where, and, you know, I mean, why, I think a joint line here.
Yeah, sorry, it's, it's, can you mic off this? Is there, um, the landmark over there? Webster or?
As far as they are supposed to screen it.
Yes.
Yeah.
There, but, but I have, and I have seen some, right, not in Flower Hill, but I did see one out toward Glen Copeland. You're right, there are pretty high bollards, like three or four feet in height, um, in the box, it's visible at least where I saw it. But they have agreed, and we could, I can amend this agreement if you like, just to make sure that we put in there that this shall be screened sufficiently. You know, I think it is here, but if it's not clear how, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, Frank, you want those bollards there, because you need that box to be protected, otherwise we're not gonna get any. I said, I directed. Exactly. Um, question, do we have a valid franchise agreement with them? I thought Bill Fleming said you mentioned that we do not have a valid franchise agreement.
Well, you have, you have an existing franchise agreement for me.
Okay, because I know he mentioned they were trying to renegotiate.
Oh, she fine, they are, they are.
So the last update I had is that they were now in active discussions with Altis and they were being responsive. That was about, yeah. All right, so we need what, authorization for the mayor to enter into this agreement?
I, I would ask if there would be an authorization by the board or a motion by the board resolving to allow the mayor to execute the agreement that would happen with the village with respect to Altis, and that would remain subject to appropriate permits being obtained. So certainly, when they come in to me with Mr. Obinski and the village, and there can be further directions without any necessary screening or conjunction of permits.
So I'll make a, a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with the additional, if needed, screening provisions added to the agreement.
All second.
Okay, hold on a paper?
Aye.
Thank you, and then, uh, one further matter, uh, this is with respect to the county appeals for the meeting of the day. As Mr. Obinski mentioned, they, in fact, I haven't been before the ARC, you'll recall, one thirty-five Woodhill was the house that had been abandoned for quite some time. Uh, has since been purchased and there was an application before the CBA for a variance, essentially to have an aggregate signed yard total of fifty point six seven feet, where sixty feet is required. Um, the board felt that it was appropriate to grant, and I'm moving to Mr. Obinski, but essentially it's remaining in the same footprint. Um, the, the structure is, the way it's already set up, that's where their average yards are. They're adding a bit of height to the house.
Right, yeah, and, and you know, part of the, the aggregate issue was that that subdivision, which backs into Fort Boulevard, is R one. And compared to all the other R one properties in the village, they're very narrow.
Right.
And the aggregate was added after that subdivision was done, so they meet the, they meet the setbacks.
Right.
But the aggregate provisions added after that subdivision was done, so it's now, it's a burden on, on all.
It's locked. The building's okay for skything, right?
Yeah, it meets all the other, other requirements.
And, and in fact, at the Board of Zomani Field, the, the architect who is proposing, actually provided the board a show of an overlay of what, what the proposed structure will look like, and there really is just, there's no difference in terms of footprint, other than the additional height. So really, it just won't be in a position as far as the average side here. So that was granted, and that was the only application before the board, but it was an in-person meeting, so that was, that was great.
Any other questions? All right, I'm up. Sewer update, so thank you to Ronnie. Um, we got a grant application into Senator Shimer's office. I gave an update last month where we have met with the sewer district for Washington Water Fusion Control District, to be precise. Um, there is existing sewer infrastructure running through the village. We asked them for some information on estimates. They, uh, they, they weren't able to give us a number, but we used some estimates from the village of Seacliff. And so all this would do, would study what, uh, what would be needed to actually bring sewers into the village in different areas. So on the eastern side of Port Boulevard, that entire neighborhood is, there's sewer infrastructure surrounding it. On the western half, it's, it's a different case, parts of it, there is infrastructure around, parts of it, there's not. So in order to understand, you know, what investments would be needed to be made, whether we could get federal or state grant funding or support to put in sewers, we, you know, more district advises, first we gotta do a study and figure out how we can connect everything up. So, uh, we'll see what comes back from, from the federal government on that, if we can get a grant. If not, we can look into ways of potentially funding that study in our home, right?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add that, um, the sewer district says for a five thousand dollar participant study, um, you know, which I asked, that's just a bit of a claim form, so we could issue that check. And we have that recovery act, the American Recovery Act money coming in, that is specifically earmarked for things like water projects, and this falls squarely into, into that, one of those categories, so, um, I think it'd be great to have a study, even if we don't get the infrastructure money, I mean, I hope we do, but to have that study moving forward in the future of the village, and have a shovel running project would be phenomenal.
Ronnie, you said deposit, is there, did something beyond a deposit for?
Well, I have no idea, you know, what, what the cost of the study is going to be. They seem to think that we're gonna get that, uh, money on that five thousand dollar deposit. I asked Steve about their study and wanted to question, they said, well, we never took a study, which makes no sense to me, I don't understand how you build a source system without a study. Uh, but they kind of piggybacked into the Nassau County, um, study.
So before we give the district any money, we need some more details on what the work is going to entail, estimates on costs, I think, before we get to that point. But I also, we did a call with Congressman Swazey's staff, who was immensely helpful on talking about some different, uh, funding opportunities. You know, some of them didn't pan out, but I think they gave us a good timeline of over the next twelve to, you know, eighteen months, some different points that we might wanna engage their office and connect with some people. So we'll continue those discussions, uh, the first step will be the study, so we're trying to lock that down. Uh, yeah.
I just have one question, so on Middle Neck Road, there is a sewer.
Yes, there's a sewer on Middle Neck, it goes.
Why, why didn't ask us? Is this a test for us?
There's a sewer law on working, so we have to wait.
There actually, there is several homes on Woodlands, uh, that have sewer, right?
Yeah, they have a sewer.
Right, and so if you actually look at the map, like, um, there's a course made that comes down Port Washington Boulevard, and then it kind of circles the entire area from Northern Boulevard, uh, over to the industrial park. That, that entire eastern side of Port Boulevard, um, could potentially be hooked up to sewers, we think. Uh, but we need to get the study done to see what infrastructure would be needed, it sounded like.
No, it sounds like it would greatly benefit me, so I was just.
You don't like receptive tape?
No, I don't particularly, because I can't.
See, that's weird to, I'm like, I'm like cherry, I'm like.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, you're, that's right, you're. I'm not serious, it's weird how chickens.
Um, chickens can tell you why, it has to do with the.
And why do I have sewer, why do I have sewer?
Well, it was the way it's all planned, I mean, there, I mean, well, I mean, okay, yeah, you're Heritage Hills, so formerly you have the look of states, it was a whole heritage thing, but, so you're hooked up.
The school was hooked up there, right?
Yeah, Flower Hill Schools, right?
Well, the school, that was where, um, Woodland Court is, and where three A through three D are.
Right.
But, and where thirty-five Center is, but, so that's all hooked up. All of Wildwood is hooked up, all of Mashati except for thirty-five Center, I believe, is hooked up. And all of Heritage Hills is hooked up. And you can see where the subdivision stops, where it becomes section six of Flower Hill Estates. So like, your neighbor's like, two doors down from you, still rely on cessables, whereas you.
Well, you know my house, so, and, and I have also, we have also storm sewers, start at my house.
And you have a pump station actually right down.
Yeah, on, on Verstra, yeah.
So, what to come on that?
You gotta hang out with me anymore.
What to come on that one? I'm actually going to Port Washington Water District, they had informed us that they were pulling their plans to expand in the park area. And then this week, we got notification that they were pulling a hearing upon to do work on the site. So, um, I'm gonna defer to Randall, because he was on the call today.
Building, right, and they.
Right, they, they're not gonna build the outlet, their plan is possibly built up.
Okay.
Built up?
Yes.
Outlet.
We haven't seen any plans.
There aren't plans, but.
Gary, it's very necessary.
Twelve, twelve stories.
Because I, because I've seen these things, I've seen, I've seen exactly what they're, what they need to do in other water, um, districts, so.
Yeah.
And they're pretty big tanks, they're pretty tall tanks.
The new alternative is to expand into the park. So, we'll, we'll see the plans from them to see what they're seeing. They've done, they've, some of the buildings are very pretty, I want them reached there. Nice, some of the buildings, they're very nice, you can get to go back and have a tour, but it's very nice, they've done a good job with some of our.
But if anybody does wanna go on a tour, they get more than happy, if more move to the Verstra side or anything, maybe, I've said, anybody wants to go on a tour. It was, it was really interesting, I mean, it's pretty simple setup, but it's really interesting to see how your water ends up cleaning your house, you know, with this pretty, pretty simple facility. So what to come on that, and then I think they, they got, I don't know, I, I was surprised, I didn't, based on the email that we got, that they weren't going to, they were gonna look at other options, I thought they were gonna look at other options, you know, offsite or something else, so.
But they wanna treat, they wanna treat the water, as they said, as soon as it comes out of the ground, that's what we prefer to do, treat.
Yeah. Yeah, so let's see what they come back with, and we're gonna evaluate it there.
I think they realized that getting the approval from Nassau County in order to do any work at ARC would take forever, and that's probably not what I'm looking at. At least, I'm making assumptions, but that's why looking at the alternatives, just in order to do things quickly.
But it's, yeah, they're, they're, they've gotta be up there against them, definitely. It's a statement.
Well, they're eighty percent capacity on the nitrogen, that's what we learned today. So, um, you know, they have a little wiggle room, you know, until they get to a hundred percent, when they absolutely must start treating it. But they were saying that, you know, they, they plan to go out to bond and, um, sometime, uh, you know, like this summer. And then they're gonna start working on projects, I mean, I can't imagine, they can't work, go work on projects without the engineering, we have to see where they're going.
Actually, I think tonight was one of their public hearings, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And then they're gonna go in front of the town of Hempstead, I don't know if it's, it's Muffet next one, and it was pretty.
July, and I think they were saying that they anticipated getting, you know, starting to move in August.
Do you get those notices, Ronnie?
Sometimes, but one district does, does whatever, they do whatever they want, yeah.
So let's, let's follow up with them, make sure they notify us, let's put our request in, notify us, let's walk them in public hearings and let everybody know, so, um, we can listen to it. Uh, traffic study, speed tables.
I got a quote, I got a quote today.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the quote that I got was only from one speed, a phone, a phone's table, close to getting a power term. Um, I asked him to send it back, uh, to update it with, with three devices, because it has, I couldn't just take the number and trip it, because it includes all the fastening equipment and all that stuff, so I just wanted to give you a, a specific number. My guess is it's gonna be five thousand dollars to do three of these. And some of that is the consumables that are remaining, and also like the drill bits and the stuff that, which is gonna need, so, so those types of devices are included in it as well.
Um, and as far as COVID goes, uh, obviously you can see we're, we're back to, to normal here, pre-normal operations. I would just encourage everyone, uh, vaccinations are pretty available pretty much anywhere, um, so check it out, I think all people. So check it out. I think if you have medical conditions and limitations, talk to your doctors and, and follow their advice and guidance. I saw today in New York State, I think sixty-six percent of adults are now vaccinated.
And that's over seven, over seven percent.
So we're, we're getting pretty close to that immunity number. I think that's going to help in the long term, but, you know, we'll continue to monitor the situation. I think we expect a pretty lumpy summer again, and hopefully that continues through the fall and into the winter as well.
And all of our committees, boards, and courts are.
Right, and sessionary.
Everything is back fully open and operational, so look forward to seeing more of everybody. And just a final thing I just want to give the board a heads up on. Our second truck has been in the shop with, oh, with a transfer case issue. And it turned into more than that and is looking at a pretty, pretty expensive repair, but it is, it is what it is. What we noticed too, though, is Rich and the team have implemented some procedures, I'd say, over the last couple of years to clean off the bottom of the trucks after salting operations. And thank God they started doing that because I think that's what led to this issue overall. Rich, I don't have any further comments on that, but great, you know, starting to do that stuff to get ahead of it, but.
The biggest thing is the rust. Obviously, salt eats through, through all that. You know, the trucks sit in there and, you know, before, before I, I took over, we really, we just let those trucks sit with salt just for months and it, it just took over and, and these trucks are not cheap. They're not like your regular car. You know, just a transfer case alone is $10,000.
So our hope is, well, it's not our hope. We know, you know, we've got the quotes and stuff, we can get it fixed. Had it last couple more years, but, you know, a few years out, we're building to kind of the capital fund that's coming along. Trying to stay and purchase some of the trucks so that we're not buying two trucks at the same time, since we just bought, bought a new large truck two years ago.
You instituted a five-year planning process, so that's part of that.
So thank you, and I, but I just wanted the board to know because that truck's been out for a while now. All right, trustee reports.
Nothing to the website.
Okay, sorry. We're going to have this entire historic press release.
I, I might need a whole new website for all this stuff.
All right, Gary, Mary Jo?
I'll, 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 because I don't know if people noticed, but we now have our pollinated garden planted. Thanks to Mary Jo's leadership on that one. So that was done end of last month. They were just small seedlings, so people will have the education for things to grow, but they will grow. So I think that's just, that was a great way to get the spring started for, for parks and beautification. We're still looking to do that improvement to the walking path at Stony Town, although some limited aspect of that. And, and then, and then we're also, also I'll give credit to trustee Collins also conspiring, an island trial program that she, she organized. We all went out that day and we had a good session reviewing the islands with Rich and I guess, why don't you pick up?
And I think it just, you know, we, you know, out of really frustration, we've been talking about these islands probably for the better part of nine months. And it was a resident has a local business and she volunteered her, her expertise to jumpstart it and thanks to Rich, made himself available. You know, we're just trying to keep it simple. Let's start with two things. The, the islands we've picked are the one by Joanne, which is probably, you know, welcome to Flower Hill and is this, you know, there, there's no irrigation on any island, so it's a little difficult, but there are flowers that do grow without.
We were watering, we were trying to water.
Yeah, yeah. So that and I think we decided on the one down by the railroad bridge, the end of Mason, what's that road? Yeah, that's the other one. Just, they're very, they're very focal points of the village. So, so anyway, so we're, we're working toward that. Next, I think with the supplies, next week he'll go and then she'll, she'll, resident will help with the, with the planting in the direction of what will be there. They'll start there and hope to, to grow that to going forward, right? Yeah. And, and regarding the paths, the pathing, we talked about perhaps painting it. It was a former meaning, but as the cost seems to be out of the two estimates, we got pretty cost prohibitive. So I think maybe trying to pit and go in Plan B, which would be potentially painting the lines, so at least there is a delineation when you're, you know, running or walking or riding your bike on that path, that the cars will know that that is a path. Right now, it's probably a little difficult to tell, so I think that's hopefully progressing. Yeah?
Yeah, so Rich, what do you have an update?
Gary made a good point. I mean, in a couple of years, that road's going to have to get repaid. I mean, for the amount of money that we were going to, if we were to paint that, it would just not make any sense.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We're all the same here, but, but the, the redoing the lines over there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I got, we got two so far. I'm just waiting for one more again. Like you said, it's tough to get people to come out too. It's, it's just.
So what's, what if we can't get three, you know, and my thing was, I don't want to still be talking about this in, you know, Labor Day and then it, all of a sudden now it's, you know, it's a moot point because people are talking now. What, what's the, what happens? And I know you had this issue with the water part. You only really get two. What happens? You, you can't do it until you get three?
I, 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 I don't have money.
No, just to paint the line, like, what are the other two?
But, but.
Just to refresh the line?
Just to refresh the line.
We're at seventy-eight hundred and the other pole was like at six thousand nine hundred.
So it's a big difference from ninety-five thousand dollars for another thing.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's, it's just refreshing the lines. Everything to everything.
Right. So is there a number under, we look, we cannot get another person. Is there a number that we could, that? Right. There, there is, there is. So the, the formal bidding process, the numbers that were just mentioned, the village isn't approaching. I think it's thirty thousand for public works projects. But there's still a procurement policy, but if, if three people don't submit bids, you know, the village will just know we put out the request. We asked for it. We only received two. We're going with the, the lowest of the two. That, that's not.
Okay. So we'll try and get that over by the end of the week and if we can't get a third, we'll, we'll move forward.
I'll give it to the, is it already at the end of this week? If this third bid doesn't come in, then we'll go with the lowest bid.
And then Rich, is the paint that they use with, I mean, I'm assuming, how long ago was this, that line painted then?
Two thousand seventeen.
Okay, so four years. So presumably this would last two to three years?
Give or take a little longer than what they tend to get.
Yeah, the product now is a little better.
Right. So at least that's something before they redo the road, right?
Do we want to do the other side as well? I did, Gary, I emailed Gary also. I forgot. The other side is just a regular white line as well. Do we want to refresh that too? Then that's going to change a little bit of the price level.
That would double the cost essentially.
Well, it's not, it's, it's, it's not that much because it's just a six-inch line that goes across. There's no.
It's not that raised.
Yeah, it's not a, a full, for the emergency services and, it's just actually just a white line that just goes all, all the way down to, through Stony Town. I mean, it, it's also same time that we painted that side, so they're both similar, you know.
So, yeah, I'd say let's try and do it. Let me know what the cost of it are and we'll, we'll nade off of that.
We just also have a center line too. We're not going to touch the center line.
We have a center line as well. That's, that's the yellow, yeah.
I think because people ride their bikes, you know, on either side with the whole idea of the.
Yeah, I think the priority is the industry.
The priority of just.
No, 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 it's just, she's.
That's why I emailed you. I said, if you want to do these other lines, when I.
I thought the priority was just the map, wasn't it? Yeah, the priority is the district. Let's, let's stick to that and get that done.
So we got, just do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's get that done and then we can, you know, down the road if it's problematic, we can deal with the other parts. All right, and, and yes, please, thanks to all of you. That was, it was pretty cool to drive around with her and get her thoughts on the town, so appreciate your, your time and help us out. All right, Claire and Freddie, sustainability?
Uh, yeah, I can give an update. So I want to thank Rich and Ronnie. We completed our inventory of existing policies and practices that would get us credit as part of the Climate Smart Community. They included a wide range of existing practices, equipment, partnership with other communities, really ran the gamut. So the next step is to start formalizing that and getting it online, which is a pretty labor intensive process. We found out, not as easy to be off, but. We got to get a really good chunk of work done and once it's empty, then we can start getting the bus and board and doing projects.
Right. So if we get a certain number of points, we can become like a silver community and we're trying to figure out how to maximize our points.
Not yet, yeah. Not going to see if we can off it. But I'll circulate the inventory to the board too, so.
Thank you. Anything on the volunteer corps?
Uh, no.
Quiet. We are still taking food, so anybody who wants to make food donations, I don't know if there's anything the Boy Scouts are doing. You know, please, you know, we have, we're constantly collecting food from the local food pantries, started under COVID. And, you know, through that kind of partnership, they've told us they're always in need of food. So if anybody has food to donate, the office is, anytime the office is open, you can donate food and we'll bring it to the local food pantries.
One thing, sorry, I just wanted to comment that the carting seems to have gone smoothly. They, they were there, you know, they knew where, they know where things are and I haven't, I don't know if anybody else has had any issues from there.
The only issue that I heard about, I think there were a couple of calls on, is people still are bringing their garbage to the end of the road. The people do it. And so I think the carters felt like they didn't want to move in their house, so they don't think the garbage would be in the paddles, but the people were used to having the paddles brought to the house. So we gave them a heads up, like, anybody who brings the garbage down expects their paddles to come back. So they're supposed to be, if anybody has any issues along those lines, let us know, but they said they would be addressing that.
We did have one problem. This is interesting. I guess, I don't even know why, maybe back in the sixty-seventies, these in-ground cans were very low. And for some reason, maybe it didn't know what they were. So we had two, we had two residents who had those in-ground cans that didn't get picked up, but I'm educating them on that.
Fortunately, one of the drivers by me was a driver we had five, six years in town.
Yeah, me too.
They got a little limp.
Yeah, yeah, he's that.
He, he knows, he knows everything.
That's great. He's a, he's a great guy.
He got like, he'll take a knowledge from.
And Albert too, he'll do anything for it. He's, he's great.
And he's such a.
Because the other, because the other side's many. It's amazing, yeah.
I have to say, I've heard a lot of people very bad, to be like.
Really? But you did initially when, when you were bidding, you said your neighbors were pretty vocal about it.
They, they were. I mean, I tried to stress to these, right, like, like you kind of hit pause, that people are very passionate about this. No issue. I, I mean, there's a couple of things where they called them back. It was, you know, they dropped some items and this kind of stuff, but it, it's been a week in fairness.
Listen, they're doing a great job recycling, ten times better than the previous quarter was. Well, I'm just saying they're doing ten times better job recycling. They're doing a great, great job with the.
It's a lot more than that.
Well, let's just stay on top of it. If we hear, you know, feedback from the community, we can reach out to the garbage carter and it's.
I mean, you know, people get, the only, the biggest kind of getting is that they pick up a little later.
Yeah.
And I said, let them learn. Yeah.
So they have their own. They have a supervisor trouble.
And.
I, I have to say, it was so proactive because the supervisors were calling me instead of me calling him. So I had to go, like, wait, he three answered that call.
It is, it is the most communication I've seen with a carter in my lifetime in the village. Like, they sent us an email the first day, like, hey, we wrapped up. Like, if you get any feedback, let us know. And then the second day, what, what was the issue? There was an issue where they were, oh, from the holiday, their trucks, they were, they like got filled up quicker. So they were like, we have to go give a run to dump it and then come back. So they said, you know, maybe, you know, a couple more hours before you have the village, which is not normal, but if you start to get complaints, we are coming back to these areas.
Right. So they're like actually getting ahead of the game by your formula, so, you know, essentially.
So we'll just stay on top.
Related subject is, I actually was not fully educated on recycling apparently. I was trying to recycle every plastic thing I could possibly do and, and I only realized like about a month ago that North Hempstead is one and two only plastic. And I don't, I, I think it would be, it'd be timely since it's in our face.
It was in that dumpster or that.
It was, okay, good, yeah, okay.
Yeah, as we sat down and talked a little about recycling issue, that was something they brought up and we said, let's use this as an opportunity.
Oh, good.
And, and try and educate people. So we should think through other ways to continue to do that because people are going to forget at some point too. Number fives you can collect and escape to town in North Hempstead, dump on Sunday.
That's what they're going to say, that's right.
That's the only thing. One other thing, there was an article this weekend about some issues that, that DeJohn had, had, I guess, at their facility at Port Washington or at his former permit. It did reach out to them. They informed me that, because I wanted to know, right, this is, you know, we're doing business with you. We want to know, we, we don't want to be doing business with someone that's out of compliance with D E C. So they said, all the issues mentioned in the article were resolved with D E C. They're in full compliance now with the permit coverage needed and a stormwater pollution prevention plan outlining the best management practice to handle onsite stormwater. So they were very quick in their response to that, I guess, following up on the concerns raised by D E C.
That's not their garbage facility, Paul.
They store their trucks there.
I mean, they store their trucks there. I thought that was only for.
It's, it's, yeah, they, they actually, that's a transfer station for they, you know, care of the retractable for the distribution.
Okay, I think that's it for.
We have a new business?
That's it.
We have a story in the port.
Have one thing, yes.
Yeah.
From Rota.
Okay, hold on, Gary's.
Story in America.
Ronnie, hold on, hold on, Ronnie. Gary's got a new business item.
Yeah, just wanted to mention, I attended the Hempstead Harbor Protection Community meeting last week. And there was a lot of discussion on the septic system, you know, obviously that's been kicked off this spring and I know we probably want to circle back on that again, because I know we were discussing it, but kind of got sid, well, not sidetracked, but we were focusing on the sewer thing. There is going to be a presentation or I guess affair or whatever, if you want to call it an affair on the, on the subject of I A systems at North Shore Land Alliance is going to sponsor on July fourteenth, I go through today. And also the guy that was very heavily active in the systems they were putting out in Suffolk County, Justin Jovan, apparently now is on Nassau County side now and very informative guy. We might want, I, I, I have spoken to him in the past, so I might reach out to him and see if he might want to give us a presentation at some point.
Yeah, we spoke to North Shore Land Alliance, so yeah, we want to set aside like fifteen minutes for next meeting and just have him come in and give us an update and talk about it.
Sure.
Okay.
I had a resident come in today of something else, but they mentioned that they were getting a new septic system. I said, wow, that's great. You can get a grant in this I A system. As I found out, we know all about it. Too much maintenance. We're not interested, even though it would, you know, it would cost them, you know, practically nothing. How do you want to come in? That, maybe that's something, you know, I, I don't know.
I haven't heard about it.
Because I heard that it was definitely a free deal, mate.
It was listed.
I mean, I, I mean, you have meetings on that online.
You're going to open it out once you're.
I know, but I had, I had like the information to say, oh, no, you know, you only have to do this.
That's, that's the mechanism. So there's, there's, you know, moving parts, mechanical parts, and you have to be.
It's not just a hole.
Yeah, and you don't get them free. I mean, it's, you, you know, they're giving you $10,000, it could be as much as a $20,000.
Sure, sure.
System, yeah.
And, and the other thing I, I also learned is that they, they only will, will take your application for a grant if you have a bona fide, like, proposal. Like, you can't just go in and say, I'm going to do it, and then get the grant and then do it. Yeah, just sort of be already signed up to do it.
Well, like, two companies that, that do the systems?
Yeah, yeah, so they're still working through a lot of the camps here.
I mean, the regular guys that do the systems, the systems surrounding, they don't, they don't do that. These are the special, specialty companies.
So let's, let's do that. Let's, let's do that so we can get questions like that answered.
Yeah, I want to check the information available.
All right, any other business? Just not, Rhoda, you had a, a conspiracy report as well.
Okay, you can read it on your own. You don't understand that I'm having trouble with accuracy. And you'll see it here because Manassas was the name for an Indian tribe for shelter island to Suffolk County. It never should have been applied to here. And, but I met with a Carol Caw from the Bryant Library. She said to me, you'd forever see this kind of a problem because people decide they want it. They didn't even want that name to begin with. And, and they keep using it. They said, well, that's Indian tribe, but it's here. We looked it up. There was something. We looked it up, there was no Indian tribe, Menhassett, nor Menhassett with the other one. So I'm trying to keep things accurate and a little amusing, because people are very amusing.
Well, we we love, we definitely love the Donuts one, for sure, yeah.
You say literally, the title of the article is literally, the whole thing may sound silly, but coffee sinkers are lit.
An internet, it was done by only men.
All right, um, the last thing for the board is, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session, uh, to discuss a potential legal.
Five seconds. Can you give me one, please?
Hi, hi. All right, so we're gonna stop the broadcast, uh, the public can go now, uh, because this is a board member holding, uh, meeting, uh, with appropriate staff. And, uh, thank you, everybody, for coming, and Mitchell, great job on the present.